Twenty sixteen dash oh five, DeNardo, Capitol Court, thirty dash forty, South Broadway. So with that, Sarah, is everybody up to date on taxes?
Yes.
Okay. No, we did have minutes. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at the February minutes? Not the March minutes, we just received those today. Have you looked at the February minutes?
Yes.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
What can I do? A motion to approve the minutes from February?
Some will.
Second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then next month, we'll take up the March minutes. Okay, first up, man, twenty sixteen dash twelve, Richard and Gail Wyler, seventeen North Dutcher. Make sure you take the microphone and state your name. Good evening.
Come on out.
Good evening.
We'd ask for approval to take out the window on the back of the house and put in a glass sliding door and a deck and stairwell to, or staircase to get down to a gray level, give us that backyard access, and also some air conditioner pad over in this back corner of the house. So we went to the zoning board and they approved us, so we are back to you.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments on the board? No? Any comments from anyone in the public? No? Marion, do you have a resolution for this one?
Yeah. Do you mean the like? (laughter). The history, in April twenty sixteen, Richard and Gail Wyler applied for site plan approval to construct a deck and stairway and install mechanical equipment at the rear of their house at seventeen North Dutcher, which lies in the View Preservation Overlay District. Han Engineering reviewed the plans and in its memo dated April first, two thousand sixteen, listed a number of issues with the site plan dealing principally with the drawings rather than the project. The proposed improvements required variances for coverage and encroachment into the side yard, which was ran by the Zoning Board of Appeals on April twenty sixth. The Planning Board held a public hearing on the application in April, and whereas the proposed improvements would not impact the view of the Hudson, when you guys vote that, you make that determination. The action's a type-two under SECRE and doesn't require any environmental review. Now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled Wyler Residence Deck and so on, subject to revising the drawings to comply with the April first, two thousand sixteen round memorandum.
I have a letter from Han Engineering stating that everything looks fully completed.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm seconded. I seem to recall that driveway, the wall picture on the right wall, open concrete, is that new concrete? Hey, Ed?
Yes.
That doesn't change anything, they repaired, they replaced the driveway?
Okay.
As long as I don't make it bigger.
Need a backup camera now.
Going to have a motion on the resolution?
Some will.
Motion to accept it.
And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay. You're welcome.
Wait a second, you give your copy of your approval.
We'll sign the resolution.
All right.
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 ...on March 22nd. Han Engineering reviewed the plans and in memorandum dated January 5th, February 26th, April 1st, and May 4th listed a number of issues with the improvements, most of which were addressed in subsequent submissions. And the submissions were reviewed by the Villages Landscape Consultant Lucille Montz, who in a memorandum dated April 29th, 2016, wrote that the issues she raised previously had been addressed. Planning Board held a public hearing on the application on January 6th, March 2nd, April 6th, and May 4th for Type 2 action under SECRE. Therefore be it resolved that the Planning Board grants the application for site plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled Kumar Residence. And I list them all, subject to compliance with the items in the May 4th, 2016 Han memorandum.
We have a...
Motion, yes.
Thank you.
Motion, yes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I don't see it.
I just skipped one, too.
Attorney? Three.
Thank you.
Next item is 2016-10 Bridge Street Park LLC, 4 West Main Street.
Good evening, Paul Petretti for Bridge Street Park LLC. So, the application really hasn't changed at all from the last time. It's still a deck, 41 feet wide, 23 foot deep, southwest side of the pavement building, which is hardly a restaurant. And so, we, I discussed all the comments with Doug, and we can address all those comments, okay? Something pertaining to, you know, how are we going to protect the columns, okay, bollards, and things like that. Rather simple, though.
Okay. Yeah, I noticed that you also provided photographs from the east side looking towards the building to show that there was no visual impact from the deck. Another thing, too, is I commend you, I really liked that lighting analysis that you did, that was very helpful. Okay.
Any comments from anybody on the board?
I just, I had two. Does the lighting, will the lighting go on, like, at a certain time, like, in your park?
Well, the best, the best, one of the better ways to do it is with photo cells, okay, but you can also have, you can also program. They also can be on a dimmer. This lighting is very low level lighting. There's not, there's no lighting fixture out there that has a bulb that's more than 125 watts. It's LED warm, and best to come on with a, with a photo cell. The building lighting can be controlled, okay, from the building itself.
So, we are having a, do we have a lighting?
Oh, they can't, they can't turn on, maybe it's probably.
Okay. So, my other question is...
Typically turn on after the last string.
It gets, okay. So, and the other thing is, I'm just, just wondering, you have two handicap parking spaces in the back of the building?
Yes.
Is that subject to, can we move that to itself? I mean, just because I, we know that that might not be the best place for those two parking spaces?
Yeah, we, we actually, we added two over here because we felt that that was close to the...
Right. No, no, I saw it, because you, didn't you take away two that were added?
Yes, we took away two.
We're adding them back.
We're adding them back, okay? But we're not adding them here, okay? The canopy is gonna, the deck is, it's got a cantilever over it, so it's partially over the parking space.
Right.
So, we only lost the two handicap space. We added them over here because it's closer to this stairway entrance that would go up to the deck.
Right.
And we added one here. We added, we added, we have the five that we need, okay? This is the basic.
Well, I just wanted to show those two by the stairs weren't, maybe they should be over a little bit further. I, I just, are they too close to the building, or?
We took them away.
We took them away.
Oh, okay.
And added. Oh, I think you said it was...
I just take the mic, hold the...
Yeah, they're, they're...
I think the other thing was, maybe Doug addressed this, too. I think it said in your written comments that you were taking the lights off of the maintenance building next door and replacing them, but it didn't show that they were coming off on the plan, so I'm just, just gonna make sure that your, your plan accurately reflects that you're taking them off or replacing.
Today, today, I got the order file for the drawing, for the lighting. I reserve bringing it in, and the plan I have with me, okay, does reflect that.
Shows that, okay.
They're coming off, new ones coming on, and then we have the wrapped lighting package, okay, which has all the fixtures, okay, their lighting characteristics, their pole heights, everything.
Any comments?
Yeah, I think that personally, I like the brackets that you did in there. And the only thing I'd ask is if, if there's a way to kind of make it so that the cantilevers are the same. Like, I understand that the stair on one side, where the building is and where it looks at an elevation is sort of skewed. You're, you're only, if you added another, almost six inches on the other side, you'd almost be equal on both sides.
So, you're speaking to the issue of...
You look at the section.
Yeah.
Can I see this?
Sure.
So, here you're at 5'6", and here you're 5'. If you add those six inches here, then at least you'll have this thing here.
I can do it. Structurally, it's not an issue.
I understand.
As you know, this is the side that's going down to the stairs. That's why it's wider, yeah, it can go wider.
I'm just, someone might see it this way, and it's a little...
Why, bigger beam. That's it.
I'm increasing your deck, so...
Highlight?
Yeah.
Any other comments? No? Mary, do we have a resolution for this?
Yeah. I apologize for the cross-ups. There was some miscommunication, but it's all reflected in the cross-ups. In April 2016, Bridge Street Park LLC applied for site plan approval to construct a 920-square-foot deck on the riverside of the second floor of the pavement building and a 245-square-foot stairway on the north side of the building located at 4 West Main Street, which lies in the view preservation of LA District. And the project requires a wetlands permit and a water bodies and water courses permit, both of which applicants submitted applications for. Han Engineering reviewed the applications and plans, and in its memorandum dated April 1st listed a number of issues with the application, most of which were addressed in the subsequent submission. The applicant submits, submitted a revised SECRE environmental assessment form on May 3rd. The applicant submitted a lighting plan prepared by R.I.P. Lighting and dated May 2nd, 2016. The Planning Board held a public hearing on the application on April 6th and May 4th. Whereas, the Planning Board determined that the proposed deck and stairway would not impact the view of the Hudson. You'll be determining that in your vote. The actions and unlisted action under, actions and unlisted action under SECRE and would have no negative environmental impacts. This one is not a Type 2 because it's not residential. So, you do have to do a SECRE review, but you can make the determination that it's not going to have any negative environmental impacts. So, therefore be it resolved, first, the Planning Board issue a negative declaration under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and be it further resolved that the Planning Board issues wetlands, wetland water bodies and water courses permits on the basis of the findings listed in the Han memorandum dated May 4th. And be it further resolved that the application for site plan approval of the deck and related improvements reflected in the drawings entitled Pavement Building Deck Addition Plan, subject to, one, complying with items 1, 2, 3, 5, and 7 of the May 4th Han memorandum. There were a couple things in there, like submit a revised DAF, which they already did, and submit a lighting plan, which they already did, so those I did not include. And, two, receiving approval from the Architectural Review Board for the light fixtures. They have to go to the ARB anyway, but just, they wanted to specify that they approved the light fixtures.
Can I have a motion?
Sure.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Thank you. Next item is 2016-07 Leslie Alcalay, Reputable Living Trust, 17 Meto Way.
Good evening, Han Designists, we're the architects, and with me is Mr. Stein, the hydraulic engineer, and Ms. Alcalay, and Mr. Rayfald, the owners. Just want to give you a little description on this presentation, because we came in front of you a few months ago in December for a small addition that required FAR approval, and you gratefully approved it. This application for the site development has been in front of you two months ago with a proposal for an extended area for parking and also some drainage and grading involved. Since then, we have modified considerably the proposition that we had presented to you earlier, and I'll just want to walk you through the steps of what we have in here in this presentation. This is the existing condition of the property that was bought by Mr. Rayfald and Ms. Alcalay in September 15, and had COs for everything that we see on the property as, as, as we as, we know it. So, the proposal was to extend the driving, the parking area here, which leads to the two-car garage that's existing. It's very hard to maneuver in this area. Once you have a car in there, you have to back up down the hill on a turn, which is really very, very hard, since the driveway is just wide enough for one car to go up. Trucks usually, when they go up, they actually take a little piece of the landscaping on each side of it. It's so tight in here. So, the idea that we came up with, and the other part of it is this part of the additional lot that was bought and merged earlier by the previous owner, was kind of not taken care of for years, so it has a few trees that are really in bad shape and in, in bad condition that they're actually dead. So, this is what we identified as the dead trees in this area, only in this area. These two trees and this one tree here are due, are going to, we will have to take them down to do the activity that we are proposing. I know the previous presentation that we brought to you a couple of months ago involved a lot more grading and a lot more trees were going to be, will had to be taken down because of that activity. So, now we scaled down the project to, and what I'm showing you, we have also the extensive landscaping plan, but before we get to that, I'll just show you the engineering and this is the time we talk about all the technical part, about the drainage, hydraulics, and all the other storm issues. So, we are extending that driveway just so a car can back up, or we can have two or three cars parked while the other can actually turn around and come back facing down, which is really very difficult. I mean, when I go there, I park down the street because I don't want to back up backward. I'm just like, so, so that's the reason. So, now, this, when we came up to you in the first presentation, we were going to take a lot more land here and try to grade it and do gravel, but that involved changing the grade, and by changing the grade, a lot of trees were going to be in, 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 in the harm way. So, we've scaled down the project to only limit it to this parked, parking area here, which will require a retaining wall to keep, because it, as you can see, the slope is very steep and it required this retaining wall. So, now, this is the only thing that we are asking permission to do, and involve removing that one tree, which is exactly in the location of the retaining wall. We are matching the existing stone work that's already here. We're removing a part of that existing wall where the compressors are to extend it, and that will give us a lot much better maneuverability and be able to face down. So, that's one piece. In this area, we're trying to create some flatter area for the kids to play in, and this, so we are creating a, some sort of like a meadow, and this also, in, by doing that, we had to remove these two trees because they're going to change the grade here, and they will not survive in the location as they are here. However, we are proposing, and in here, there's no retaining walls, nothing, it's basically just grading and sloping the grade and leaving it natural slope.
We're adding a staircase in there, too, aren't you?
I'm sorry?
Aren't you adding some stairs in there, too, on the slope?
Yeah, there's one set of stairs that, I'm sorry, on the last section. There is one set of stairs, because we're going up about six, seven feet here between, so this is a slope, natural slope, and we're retaining this with planting material. This will, just, it allows us to go up sort of basically straight, and then we're trying to make this whole area flat. Now, in this area, we, like, I identified exactly 10 trees that are dead that has to be removed due to this, that, not even due to this activity, but they're in the right, they're just really not going to survive, and except for these two trees that we identified there. I think we, I don't know if we submitted, where's the application, the listing of trees, and it's identified in three different areas. There is the front, what we are proposing to plant in the front area, and what we're proposing to, in the back area, and then what's in the woodland area. So, in, I gave a little summary of those trees that we are proposing, and we are proposing about, in, in the front area, 64 evergreens and five fall trees in the front. In the back, we are proposing 29 evergreens and 23 trees and shrubs, and then in the rear, 36 evergreens and 42 shrubs, and then in the patio area, 28 evergreen and five shrubs. So, in total, we're proposing 167 evergreens, 75 trees and shrubs, 263 perennials, and 872 bulbs. So, we're really planting this whole thing, it's going to be a beautiful garden. The activity, as I said, is just creating a little hill here to create a flat area and the retaining wall in order to get that backup area, which is a real hardship. It's not like a luxury, absolutely not. We also, there was a point made, I think, about the height of the wall. It's really no option, this is the only way we can do it, but we are trying to, and it's only visible basically from the driveway or when you're right here at the entrance of the property. We're suggesting for the retaining wall, in addition to all the trees that are still on the property, and a few of them are very mature, is we are proposing to do a, a whitebird, a green spruce, and then two hemlocks and, and holly. So, there's a basically, so when you're close to that wall, it's kind of cuts it down a little bit and camouflaged as well. But like I said, the, the stone and everything that we're using is exactly what's on that, on that retaining wall. We're going to take it apart, match it, add to it, and expand it. And other than that, this is really the, the full scope of the design that we are proposing. I know there were a few points that were made at the last meeting about the minutes of the original application and the House approval, which in fact, anything are registered, but at this point, we are so far away from the water course, which is at 85 feet away from where, we are doing no more activities in the driveway on the bottom that caused us to worry about the, the water course and all the other issues that came up with it. We're doing none of that work except for expanding of the driveway. And Mr. Stein will walk you through the hydraulic and all the other issues that Han Engineering and had kind of followed up on that.
So, you're not doing anything to the actual driveway?
Nothing, no, except the, the parking area.
I'm going to have, I have a question on that before you move on. Could you go to the last page where you had the, the trees marked? Yeah. That, that area by the parking, the new parking, now, just move your finger down, that, right there, that's...
Yes.
That's labeled as a temporary, I think, temporary construction pad?
It's a temporary fence, I think.
No, no, no. The pad, what's that?
Oh, so that's really...
Yes, there's, there's a temporary construction entrance here. That's basically to be able to access to the rear of the property.
Oh, so you, you...
So, when we're, when we're constructing this driveway portion here, we're going to be accessing, accessing this area directly from the driveway, and then once we go to do the work at the rear of the property and the regrading, this will be our access point to get back there.
And that's temporary?
That, that's to be temporary. So, officers, head, was in receipt of Han's office's comments earlier today. Subsequently, I spoke to Doug, just to go through and just discuss a few of them. For the most part, there's, there's some clarification, just, you, they're requesting clarification, they're requesting that the wetlands, or the, sorry, the water course actually be delineated formally. But the, the, one other comment they had was looking at doing an overall watershed study of all the tributary properties coming down to design point. As proposed, where our, our plans meet the code, where we did a pre-imposed construction analysis, and there's a, based upon the, the changes in topography on the site, as well as this, whatever increase in asphalt area is being mitigated also by elimination of other asphalt or other impervious areas on site. Therefore, we ultimately have a zero increase in impervious area to the site, and doing a pre-imposed analysis, we end up with no increase in the rates of runoff with, with the addition of this driveway here. We had done testing in, over where the driveway was going to be expanded before, where the grades were going to be raised due to ledge rock. Since we're raising the grade, it wasn't going to be a problem. However, since we're not raising the grade to the way we were before, we wouldn't be able to do any practices in that area. But again, with doing the regional study, it's going to further demonstrate that there is no increase in the runoff coming from anything with, with the installation of that portion of the driveway.
But where is, where is the runoff from the new driveway going? How is that being handled?
It's going into, there's an existing trench drain that goes across the driveway here that's picked up. There's, underneath the asphalt, based upon previous plans that we had, there is a four-foot high by eight-foot by eight-foot concrete drywall that goes into, and that then overflows down to the stream.
You, you said what, on the right of that plan is, is subtraction of impervious?
Yes.
But that, doesn't that flow to the right?
No. This all, with the exception of this small portion, this all flows down.
I know that the front flows that, but I forgot what the contours were on your, on your right.
This all flows down this direction, and then break down to here.
Now, with your regrading of all of that in the back, a couple of issues that I have are, all of the vehicles, the construction vehicles are going to be coming around the side.
Around this way.
Around that way.
Yes.
And there's nothing there at the moment, with no driveway. There's no driveway. They're going to be coming in on dirt.
Yes.
And what's going to be happening to all of that dirt that they're going to be picking up on as they go by?
Well, that's why we have a tracking pad here to prevent any tracking of that material coming off.
No, I understand that, but you have to go up and down a pretty good slope there.
Right. We're, we're, this portion is being regraded as they come up here. They're going to be, they're bringing in material and regrading, for the most part, this area here, this is just, this is being pulled in a little bit, oh, sorry, this is being cut a little bit, this is being filled, so it's really a balance going on for the most part up in this area. So, there's really, there, there's no increase where they're trying to truck material in. There may be some additional material that's needed here, but the material, as it's brought up, could be brought through here, and that area is all to be restored. It's, it's only be a temporary disturbance that will, upon, and that's all included within the limits of disturbance of the work that's happening. So, we have a set of erosion control measures and a temporary measure, and all those areas will be restored upon completion.
So, you're cut and fill's not equal, you're bringing material into the site?
Right, in this area, we're going to need some additional fill, but for the most part, right in here and over in here, these are really balancing out because there's not, it's just a slight change. Again, there's a slight cut on this side, a slight fill on this side, so there's not that tremendous of a change in grade.
What's the height of the, of the original or existing retaining wall?
The existing wall, and I believe it has, it has parapet on, on it.
From bottom to top?
Right, from bottom, we're at elevation approximately 496 up to 500, and then add in the fourth parapet wall. So, that's roughly 10 feet.
Eight feet.
Eight feet?
Eight feet. I, I looked at this, and I, I got that you're a little bit more than that now, and then when you add the four, you're up to 18 feet.
We are not, we were not having parapet wall. At the top of the wall here, it's going to be 501.5, and the base of the wall is 487, so it's 14 and a half feet.
If I think I did my math right, overall, including your fence, the four-foot-high fence, it's an 18-foot-high wall.
With the fence cracked.
Yeah.
But the wall is, without the fence, is three feet less than that.
Four feet less.
Four feet less than that, right.
Yeah.
So, it's...
14 feet.
14 feet, yes.
Yeah.
At the worst-case scenario, it's just at the, at the lowest...
Though the other areas, it's, it's only...
This, is that at that point there, it immediately decreases as it gets up to meet the original wall, as well as goes down to the side. So, this decreases down to 11 feet at that point.
My big concern is, is from the street.
Yes.
Is what you can see. So, I would appreciate if you could show this through either photo montage or even just dashing in from a photograph from the street. So, what, what the neighbors are going to see, what it looks like, but me, I mean, that's a very, very tall wall.
And it's...
I mean, thinking, look at your elevations, too, of how that's going to impact what your building is, your, your structure's going to be.
But the top is the same, because we're heating up the existing top with the increase downward, not upward.
I understand, I understand that the mass of that is going to be pretty extensive compared to what, when you're looking at this building from the street.
Right.
It is going to be impressive beyond impressive.
And it's, and understand, again, if this is not being done for...
I understand there's a need...
Play area, if this is done for a significant reason that there, there is a hardship, I, the two times I've actually gone to the site...
I understand that, and I respect that, I understand that that is a problem. I just think that there probably are other ways to, to mitigate the scale of that that are going to be both beneficial to your client and to everyone who's going to be driving by. So, perhaps it's not a straight wall, perhaps it's a staggered wall, some height, where it's landscape better. So, it isn't so much of like, here is this 14-foot-high wall, and then a building behind.
This concrete slab behind the area that you're adding, that is already a parking area, that's part of the driveway, correct?
This is a parking area here. This small portion is that...
That's what you're adding on.
Correct.
So, is there no other way to add something farther back rather than projecting it out closer to the street?
No.
This is where you'd be backing out of the garage, trying to get out.
Well, then you have to back out in that direction. What if you backed out going the other direction?
Because if you backed out in this direction, you're not going, you're not facing the direction you're trying to leave. And trying to, to put a tier in the wall where it goes further down, again, this, this is sloping down the hill. So, the further, or the more tiers we put, the higher that's going to get. We can, we can put it together, some type of montage like you're requesting, showing the landscaping that's going in, that will provide the screen.
Honestly, I think it's in, in the villagers' interest and the clients', more the client's interest to see what impact you guys are proposing. I'm not trying to be against you, I just think that what you're rendering shows and what I think the reality is going to be is a little bit, a little bit different. So, I, I just think it's better everyone understand what it is. But as a 14-foot-high wall, my concern is what happens from the street. I'm concerned about that.
This wall is going to be, what, about 40 feet long, by measure?
It's, it's 30 feet in this direction, it's 20 feet coming out.
So, it's 30 feet long facing the street, and then it's 13 feet continuously across, 13, 14 feet?
No, no.
It's about, it's 14 feet at that corner at that point, and it decreases in height to here to approximately, sorry, to approximately 10, 10 feet at that point.
I, I apologize, it's actually 18 feet is what my math did. So, the highest point with the...
With the fence.
That's, you know, significant.
If you take, if you took an average height...
You can, you have to share the microphone, because it's, it's also our transcript.
So, if you take an average height of 12 feet high by, by 40 feet long, that's about 480 square feet of wall that's going to be looking down over the road. And, and plus, at 14, 12 to 14 feet high, you're talking about a, a, one and a half stories almost, high wall.
But it's also what happens with the slopes, because you have a slope coming to it, and then this wall, so it even is going to seem perceived to be even taller.
You're going to be looking up from the street.
No doubt, it's a tall wall. We, we're not, I'm absolutely with you on that one, and we tried different options before we got to that point, and you saw our first presentation was trying to avoid that, and it turned, ended up that we re, regraded the whole hill. So, really, we realized that, and it's an expensive wall as well, so we're trying to get the best out of the situation, but this house is not workable without more space to get in and out of it. It is, it is a 15 feet of stone where, where in the worst-case scenario, but however, the height is exactly the same as where it is right now. It's only in the worst corner where it gets higher, and that's what we're trying to reduce with, with, with planting and trees. So, basically, the base is shortened, and that's why we have the hemlock, which spread out quite a bit, and this way, the bottom is kind of camouflage. The top is exactly there, it's been there, it's still there, it's just went up forward. That's, that's what we're trying to do.
I, I would appreciate if you did what we, we requested, which is to...
Yes, we will, we will, we will...
And look at different alternatives that I think will benefit both you, the village, and...
Right, and also cost. I mean, there's always a tiering and doing two layers, but then now you're building two walls. We consider that, and now your, your, your cost is double, and you have to dig down a lot more, and the disturbance is quite more, because we have to create a space for the first wall and then the second wall, so now we're getting even closer to the water course. So, we're trying to stay...
So let's see, let's see what the real impacts are based on photographs and how this thing is going to look, especially from the street.
Right. Okay. We'll do that.
Also, I would like, have you gotten Lucille Munn's notes?
Landscape architects.
Landscape architect.
Has the board, has the whole board read them?
Yes.
Very extensive.
Quite extensive.
But we haven't received them.
Several issues on that Lucille has brought up.
We haven't received them.
George, you should read them.
Yeah, and I think we're just, also just receiving the tree information this evening. It wasn't on the plan, it wasn't submitted with the package.
It was, it was. You mean the trees that were being taken down?
Nothing is really named or replacement, whether they're being replaced with exactly.
Was also sent in the document, the list, but it wasn't...
I didn't see it before.
I don't, did anybody get it? I don't, I didn't get the tree. Well, I got Lucille's memo, but I didn't get the information regarding the trees on the site.
This is here, it was here, it was identified right here by number of trees, the dead trees that were removed and these trees. It's been on the application all along.
We don't have any replacement plan, any landscaping plan for replacement of all that, all of those trees.
We didn't get it.
We didn't get anything.
We didn't get it.
Well, the landscape plan that I saw though didn't match up. You know, it's hard to review the landscape because it's done, it's done in...
So what it did not have...
Different than the engineering.
Sorry, the original presentation was a landscape plan showing what's being taken down and what's remaining. And we realized that was confusing to the board and to all of, anybody who's reviewing this. So we decided to keep the trees, the number of trees that have been taken down, which is considerably less than it was before, to the engineering plan. And the site plan, although it has them in here, it's just not, we gave you the proposed and we gave you a list of all the plantings that we're proposing, which I just, again, we summarized it, so it's easier to...
We gave the plantings, but we don't know the size.
They are on their list, every size, every...
Which we didn't get. This we're just getting this evening. That's until again. The extent of the regrading, what's out there now in the backyard?
The backyard?
Yes.
You see now the, it's, you see, it's a, it's a, it's a sloppy hill with a lot of trees in here. And these are the, this number of trees which are remaining and we are, and there's some sort of an open area in the center, and that's what we are going to be expanding to create more of a play area, a grassy area. And then, then to communicate back to the patio level and the pool area that we're just creating that hill was the steps to connect vertically between the two areas as in this proposed plan.
Well, I think, well, a couple of things. I think George's comments and Sheila's comments and Sees' comments are all well-taken. I think those are all issues that we want to see further analyzed and discussed and looked at in different ways. I think also you've got to make sure that you're going to have construction equipment going to the backyard. You can't just have, I don't think you just have a construction pad by the new driveway. You're going to have to do something to protect that slope going around the side of the house to get to the backyard.
Uh...
Did you, did you, you gave us all, I guess you gave us your, your solar erosion control fencing here, but you're going to have to do something coming around the side of the house here. It seems to me it's steep and you're going to do extensive...
Right. We're going to go from that area, we're removing some steps in here and we're creating a passage to this, to the upper area. And that's going to be a ramp temporary ice hole, right?
Yes.
And then it will be taken down back to where it's...
Was that shown on any of the plans as a temporary ramp?
We can indicate that it's a temporary ramp, but again, the grading that's being taking place is with the, the different items that which are being removed between the stairs as pathway, this area's being regraded and rewired, so it's going to act as its own ramp to get back there.
But it should be a stabilized area during, during the construction.
We can clarify all that in the plans. That's not a problem.
All right. Then I'd like to say, see more about the backyard too, about what's, what's back there now, what's going on, the condition of those trees, we just got that information tonight, and the regrading, the extent of the regrading that's being done and the amount of fill that's being brought in.
The condition of the trees, that isn't, that was indicated on the plan of which ones, which ones were dead based upon going out visually seeing them and seeing them basically broken off completely from the tops and there's nothing, nothing germinating on them right now.
Was this done by an arborist or?
It was done by visual inspection. It was, it's pretty clear. When you look at them, it's pretty clear.
Sorry, just, just add one thing. We did have an arborist out there and he can...
Can you say your name, please?
Yes, sorry. I'm Andrew Raifel. My wife, Liz Alkali, is the owner of the property. We did have an arborist out there. We considered just coming before, going before the tree removal, but we thought the right thing to do was to combine this into one package so you could see it all. The arborist has a report he's ready to submit that would show that these trees are dead. This part of the property was never developed. It's about a half acre. It looks terrible. We will include pictures next time. Basically, there's a lot of dead trees. It's kind of begging to be put into usable shape. And I just wanted to say one other point to Mr. Boyle's comments about, we brought in two architects and two landscape architects to really think about this wall because the last thing we want to do is create something that disrupts anything for our neighbors. Something we've tried to be really thoughtful about. I totally respect your point. Our original submission, we wanted to make this a smaller wall. And we thought that hearing all the points that were made last time, that it was clearly important to remove as few trees as possible. And we've entertained a lot of different options. This seems like the only workable one. I think we tried to show just quite how much trees we would plant around the bottom, bushes and trees to make this so this would not be visible. This is setback over 85 feet from the road, so this really is quite removed from it. But I totally respect the points that are being made here. So thank you.
Well, for me, I'd like to go out to the site. Actually, I'd like to go out to the backyard too and see the front. I did drive by, but I didn't go onto the property several weeks ago so I could get a view before all the leaves came out. But I would like to see the backyard particularly and what's being addressed back there, what's being done. So I don't know if anybody else wants to, so if we can set something up or we can have a site visit and...
Probably coordinated with...
We don't want to have to drive up and back out of the driveway.
Especially if you all will try to drive up there.
That's what you want, that's what you want, that's what you want.
And one other comment, I know Lucille had this comment and I also noted it too. It was a very large tree that you were creating a tree well around.
Yes.
The question became whether that tree well, will that tree survive with that tree well around it because you're coming awfully close to the tree and creating a tree well for a size, that size tree.
We can expand it back further out, that wouldn't be a problem. The tree well's only a foot deep at that point. It was just a tree we were trying to preserve so we didn't want to, we're doing what we can to preserve it.
Would the well be big enough to extend behind the drift line?
No.
No.
That's where the sucker roots are.
Yeah, that's...
We'd build a ridge back to that point.
Those roots can be very close to the surface, so that's the issue. So, okay, that's something else we can take a look at too. So do we want to set a, we set a date tonight?
Yeah, try to.
Let's do that. What do we, what do you prefer? Do you prefer on a weekend?
Is it okay with you?
Is that okay with...
Absolutely, yeah.
I think once you guys see the driveway, when you go up and you see, you'll understand. I spent...
That's a good idea for the site visit. The 14th or the 21st.
Sooner the better.
Pardon me? Does the board have a preference for the 14th or the 21st?
I can do it.
You cannot? So let's, 21st?
21st.
How about the 21st? Is that good? We'll meet out at...
Saturday, seven away from that 15th, Saturday, whatever that is.
Saturday to 21st.
The 21st.
I'll be just returning home.
Okay. And then the next weekend is on Memorial Day weekend?
Yeah, all have to be here.
Okay. So why don't we...
If you'd rather do it on the 14th, I'll do it. How come, don't worry.
What do you want? Do you want, do you feel that you want to come see there? Or you can go out there on your own too.
Yeah.
All right. So let's do it on the 21st then.
Is there any way we could, if you could consider allowing us to do a portion of the work so we can take advantage of the weather without, since the wall is remaining concerned, we can do the back work before they move?
I think I'd like to see the backyard to the extent of the work that's being done in the condition of the backyard now. So I'd rather you hold off.
Okay.
We'll make the 21st.
At what time? Nine thirty?
Nine o'clock? Nine, is that good? Everybody, nine o'clock on the 21st?
Five o'clock, 21st.
Okay.
Taking one.
Do you have, do you have the report from the...
Sure, but I have a question. If we do want to make changes as a result...
You need the microphone?
Sure. No, no, I totally understand. Insofar as you will be visiting the site, if we did want to make changes as a result, will we have to wait until, basically this is coming from a place of really wanting our kids to be able to settle into the house before they start school in Irvington? And the longer we wait to start the work, obviously with the approval of the board, the less time that they'll have. And my concern is that we won't even be in a position to be there by the start of the school year. So I'm just wondering if there, how the process will go once you do look at the property, if we'll be able to get something in for the next planning?
So you have to revise the plans. What's the, what's the submission date?
The deadline's that next, that Wednesday after.
The Wednesday after the 21st?
My suggestion is that when we come, that perhaps there'll be alternatives that have been looked at. Looked at, and perhaps we can...
No, sorry, the deadline's the 18th, so...
Oh, so we'd be past it anyway for the next...
Okay.
All right. You want to go the 14th?
I appreciate that. Thank you.
That's okay.
14th?
You can see the wall here.
Okay, we'll make it the 14th at nine o'clock.
Do you have the landscape architects?
Paul.
Yes.
Let them come in, tell them to come in. Yeah, they're not...
All right. This is 14th at 9:00 AM.
Oh, St. Barnabas.
Next, I lost my agenda. Seven, eight, yes, right, St. Barnabas.
Paul's here for St. Barnabas.
You're here for St. Barnabas?
So I believe the next step is to try, we're already to St. Barnabas. Spoke to, we know this afternoon, we have a project of children and we asked them to stand in and we're going to ask you to move this to the Southern Board of Appeals.
Comments remain important.
Last time we met, they were going to propose to move the fence back, the fence that's perfectly to Broadway. Could you do that?
Yes. It's on, it's on Mr. Lopez's plan. Okay. Yeah, and I think Lucille...
And you made the wall, the fence not solid? Or is it solid?
Whatever he said last time, okay. I didn't represent that part of the application, but whatever he said, that's what we're doing.
So the fence is out of the, it was going to block the...
It's out of the line of sight.
Out of the line of sight.
It's out of the line of sight. It's cut off at the Broadway line, at the buffer line, correct?
The fence coming towards Broadway, it was too close to Broadway, it was in the...
It was in the buffer, yeah. Okay. Yes. Okay.
Any other comments?
No.
Any comments from anyone in the audience?
Okay, it's deeper behind the new location of the columns. It's here.
Is that what you, I think, did you want him to go all the way back?
No.
Okay.
Before, the columns were being moved, so you see, the fence was beyond the columns.
Yeah, okay. So he made the change.
Okay.
All right. So I think you can go to ZBA.
Thank you.
And come back to the line of sight.
Okay. The next item is 2016-05, the auto capital.
Doesn't make sense, but a good thing.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, David Cooper, you are from Missouri, Simon
Steinmetz. While we're setting up, I'll just give you a quick intro. I think the bulk of tonight will be the visual impact analysis that you would ask for, I'm going to back up. As you know, this is the denaro application, the subdivision application for 27 units for a modern development consisting of total 27 units, 21 market rate and six affordables. As you know, most, you know most of the team, but let me introduce you to some other members of our team that are here with us tonight. Joe and Sylvia are here tonight and obviously my partner David Steinmetz is here. You know Anthony Gucioni from JMC. Also, Richard Pearson from JMC, our trucking engineer. Philip Jean, who's going to help us with, also from JMC is going to help us with the presentation tonight. And Glenn Trevani, the architect on the, on the matter. The main purpose of tonight, for our, for our purpose at least, we're hoping to come away with an understanding of the final layout for the development because what we want to do is based on that final layout, finalize or complete the remainder of the assessments for your board, engineering, I know, but stormwater, et cetera. Couple of questions as to where the final layout will be before we can actually complete the, those studies for you. So at the last meeting we did, or before the last meeting actually, you asked us to do a visual analysis of the site based on the proposed plan from various locations from Station Road, from South Broadway, the Cronin Aqueduct. We've prepared that for you. Also, at our last meeting, there were some discussions about potential alternative layouts because of, because of the concern that the view from Station Road may be a little wall-like and is there a way to break that up? So what we've done is taken a look at two alternatives, two alternative layouts which would provide more space up on, on that area. One of the items, and Mr. Gucioni will take you forward in depth, but one of the issues that we're trying to address is the green space. We have, you know, we do believe that it is a nice amenity for the project as you enter into the site at the arrival, and we're trying to preserve as much as we can. So one of our alternatives preserves a little bit, little bit of that space, another of it unfortunately loses it all. I will let Anthony, or Mr. Gucioni go through it. And then another item that came up at the last meeting was the site distances and how to mitigate a potential site distance coming out of the driveway. We thought it would be beneficial if Rich could come and take you through the study, but also potential mitigation measures and potential options that we've been looking at. Nothing, nothing set in stone yet, but we, you know, thought it would be worthwhile to go through it with you. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Gooch, to Mr. Gucioni, to go through it. And I think after that, maybe we'll take questions and answer any questions about the layout, and then I'll go over to Rich.
Good evening, Anthony Gucioni from JMC. I would like to take you through several site plans, as David was saying. This is the plan you've been seeing. This is the plan we presented to you a month ago. So the only change to this plan from what we presented a month ago is that the driveway here along the east side of the site has been widened to 20 feet in width. It was 12 feet previously. I've been meeting with Mr. Maron, have been working on the emergency vehicle circulation, and that 20-foot road better accommodates the emergency vehicle. So that's the only change that's been made to this plan. And those changes have been carried over into the other two versions I'm going to show you as well. So just keep in mind that this original plan had three units here, a three-unit building here, and it had the green space at the top of the driveway with the stormwater feature beneath that green space. So now I'll take you to alternative one. What this does is replaces the three-unit building here and the three-unit building here with duplexes. It takes the two units that we lost on the south side of the site here and replaces them with another duplex here in the area that was previously the green space. And then we've taken... It's okay. And then we've taken the stormwater feature that was here and moved it into the new green space in between these two duplexes here at this location. So this does lose the green space at the top of the driveway. The applicant prefers to have that green space there. It is a nice amenity at the top of the driveways. You come into the sites, you're not driving and seeing a building. You come in and you kind of have open green space which buffers the development as you come in. So with that in mind, we came up with another alternative, which is kind of a compromise between this plan and the original plan that we'd like to show you. It's alternative two here. So here we left the three-unit building here and proposed a two-unit duplex in place of the three-unit building that was there previously, took the unit that was lost here and added, sorry, I keep going over still, added it here to make that duplex a three-unit building. And then we split the stormwater between the two open areas, between the two green areas. So here, when you come in the driveway, you come up, you still can see sort of a green space at the top of the building, although not as large as the original plan, there is still a green space at the top, and it kind of is a kind of a compromise between the two plans. What we've done to further analyze this, we've been listening to the board, you'd like to see those visual studies. So we prepared several different visual studies. You've got some vantage points here. You can see there's a one, a two. So one is at this location, sitting on Station Road, looking up the hill through the McConsterne property, up the hill to the site. Number two is coming northbound on South Broadway here, looking into the site here. Number three is coming southbound on South Broadway, looking into the site in this direction. Then we've got two in the back, four and five, from the aqueduct buffer, which look into the site from there. I want you to keep in mind that the visuals we did, taking into account winter view, we took the pictures in the winter when there's no leaves on the trees. So in the summer, there would certainly be much less of them. So let's go to the first visual. So this is an existing conditions view from view number one at Station...
Excuse me for one second.
Sure.
Chuck, could you try to turn off the lights on the side? I apologize for that. Hold on.
Yeah, I know it's over.
No, 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 no. Be alone. You just shut the outside off. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's better. Thank you. Okay, so this is view one, looking from Station Road. It's an existing conditions. I'm going to take you through four different views for each, four different visuals for each view. It's going to be existing conditions. It'll be the current plan, that was before your board. There'll be alternative one and alternative two. So this is the existing conditions. You can see the fee building at the top of the hill. You can see the McConsterne house in the foreground. And, okay, we'll go to the current plan now. So now we add the two three-unit buildings to the top of the hill. You can see them here. You can see one three-unit building here and one here. Again, this is a winter view. I just looked at it, I just drove by now. In the summer, these trees are all leave now, and you've got the trees in the foreground as well as the trees in the background. You really don't see much of the fee, don't really see the fee building at all up on the hill. So this is the two three-unit buildings. Let's go to the next one. This is alternate one, which is the two duplexes. You've got a duplex here, you've got a duplex here, and then you've got the open green space in the middle between the buildings. We'll go to alternate two. This one now has the duplex to the west, the three-unit building to the east, and it's got the medium-sized green space in the middle here. Just the placement of the trees and where the photos, you really don't see it as much here, but it is right behind those trees in that location. Okay, now we're coming south, northbound on South Broadway at the Station Road's right here. You see the McConsterne house. And in the back, this is existing conditions, you see the fee building in the rear. Now we'll go to the current plan. This adds the buildings in. You've got the three-unit building here and a three-unit building here. And, you know, the way the trees are set up, even without leaves, you really don't perceive too much mass or too many buildings from this vantage point. This is alternate one, so you've got the two duplexes, a duplex here, a duplex here, and you can see a little glimmer of the green space in between there. We'll go to alternate two, which has the three-unit building here, the two-unit building here, and the green space in the middle. Now we're coming southbound on South Broadway, looking into the site. This is existing conditions with the existing driveway and the fee building here in the back. So now you go to the current plan, which shows you the open space here with some buildings in the background. So you can just kind of make out the buildings through the trees in the background. And then we'll go to the alternate one, which is the two duplexes in the back, and this puts the building in the green space a little more front and center there. And then this is the one with smaller green space in the front, which has the threeplex building here, and then the threeplex and the duplex on the south side of the site. This is vantage point four, looking from the Croton Aqueduct. So you're walking southbound on the Croton Aqueduct, looking left into the site, and you can see the carriage house here. You can see the fee building in the background. And this is the existing stone wall and chain link fence that are there. Now we're going to put the buildings in. We've added a, we're planning on doing something to match the height of the brick wall that's further to the south. So this, before here, we put a wood fence on top of the stone wall, which would show what you would see, whether we create a new brick wall or do a more solid fence on top of the existing stone wall. And here you see, you know, basically the second story of the proposed units. This is a duplex here, and there's a three-unit building in the middle. And this is the last view, looking from the Croton Aqueduct, going northbound, looking to your right into the site. You can see the top of the residence building, you can see the top of the fee building. And now we'll drop the buildings in, and now you've got the second story of the duplex, yeah, the duplex and the three-story building here. And this is kind of, you know, a similar view to what you see if you were to look behind us at the other side of the aqueduct. There are all houses up along the edge there that are very similar view. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions on the plans, on the visuals, getting your thoughts.
Is the original still your preferred, or you just...
Okay. We'd say the...
What would you like?
Yeah. The original is the preferred by the applicant. That keeps the green space at the top of the hill. Say the second choice would be that plan in the middle where we had two green spaces that kept some green space in between the buildings, kept the green space at the top. Probably the last alternative where they completely lose the green space at the top of the road. That's a nice amenity for the site. It's a nice way to enter the site.
Jean, can you go back to the site plan?
Okay. Your watch took us back to the Station Road view.
Well, can you just go to that one, Ray? Why can't you...
Sorry, this one?
Right, why can't you... My big problem with this is that the three tops are very bulky to me. And if you keep them at two duplexes, like, the three ones, to me, are very heavy.
Okay.
Very bulky. And if you could keep them at two-twos and see the green space in the middle, why can't you move the one that's in the green, that one, over to where the green's to the left and keep it two-two-two?
Move this one?
Move that one over to the right.
Well, there's not enough room with the separation. That's why we went to two threes there, because when you put the separation between them...
That bothers me.
The three.
No, I like the twos also.
You like this plan?
No, the one with the twos, all twos.
Yeah, I don't think we have a plan with, oh, that's got mostly, yeah, more twos. There's only one three here.
And I think it gives the occupant, each occupant has an end unit.
Right.
Which, you know, after a while being in the unit, that's, I think, more appreciated.
We don't argue with that. The duplexes are definitely more desirable because you have more glass, more space around the buildings.
More light in the unit.
Right, but due to the restrictions with the, you know, building separations, and we, you know, had to put, we put some threes in.
And this would be your least desirable, as far as the applicant's...
That's correct.
It's impossible to move, to drop two down to the bottom?
That's a, that, you know, you have property down at the McCon...
Oh, down here.
Yeah. And it just seems to me that we're not using that like it should be. We can break it up a little bit by shifting...
Put a duplex down there, perhaps, you're saying?
I think you'd really see it from Station Road.
You absolutely would, yeah. I mean, here you have the foreground of buffer, then you have this large buffer, and there's about a 50-foot grade change from the site up top to the lower site. So, you know, your eye really doesn't carry up that slope when you're coming down. This is a little more apparent from Station Road and from Broadway, much more apparent.
No, I think the one view that you didn't look at that I thought I had made clear the last time was the view from the crest of Broadway coming north.
Right.
When you're, when you are actually in your car at the height actually of the fee property. And that way, you're not looking up at the property, you're looking directly into the property. And that's the, that's the view that I was concerned about, because that's the view that you see most of the buildings on the fee property now.
Yeah, we actually drove up there, I was looking at, we drove all along here, and with all the trees and the curve, we weren't seeing a whole lot up there. It was hard to get a good angle with that one big tree that's here, too. It's hard to get an angle where you saw a whole lot, so that's why we chose going down here.
But actually, from up there, that's an area where you're basically almost the same level of the fee property.
You're high, right.
And that is the, and this has been discussed since the beginning. Now, it's the, that's right, that's the point that most of us were most concerned with. And it's from that height up there that all of a sudden you do perceive the kind of bulk of this. And you can see, you could see how big the fee property was, even though it's set back so far.
Right.
And that's where it's been talked about before, about designing this from the outside in as opposed to the inside out. You were given this, you know, there's a certain amount of area that you've been given by the Board of Trustees, and what we're trying to do is at least make it so that mitigate that bulk, which is pretty impressive, from the rest of the village, so that it doesn't seem as big as what it's there. And that's why there were these ideas about having to deal with basically that point. And that is probably, as everyone has said here, that's sort of your entrance from Dobbs Ferry to the village. And everything before that is all green. And then all of a sudden, you come to that crest of that hill, and that sort of announces you through. All the other properties of similar way, they don't have that same kind of impact as this will. And that's why I thought it was really important. And we had gone through it with the visual analysis of the previous applications. So we sort of knew it already, and that's why we're trying to give you the heads up. So I was a little kind of surprised that you didn't show that particular spot.
Yeah, I apologize if we misunderstood. We drove up there and tried to get a spot where we could get a good photo. We actually took some photos from up there, and just as looking at where we could do the visual, it seemed to, it's here. I apologize if we misunderstood.
The additional concern is, what you're showing on your photo, your Photoshop drawings is the trees as they are today, but obviously, when you build this, those trees, some of those trees, and many of those trees are not going to be there. Because you have some of the trees that form the canopy that you see from Station Road and from Broadway are actually the trees that are in the middle of the site. And those trees are not going to be there when you develop this. Then you're going to have buildings, so what you're going to have is, you're not going to have the tree canopy that you see. You're going to have trees on either end, and then it's going to dip down, and in there you're going to see all the buildings. See, and that's my concern, that that's what you're going to see when you're at the crest of Broadway coming north. You're going to, you're going to lose a lot of those trees, because again, as George said and what I've said, you're actually at the height of the fee property. And that, so, that's what's got to be mitigated.
There's a lot of open lawn up in the site, but there are some trees placed.
There are some specimen trees on that property that are not going to be there. They're all not going to be there. And if you look at what the canopy is, that is a big portion of the canopy in the middle. And again, even on, as you approach, and I'm not as concerned the approach from Broadway going south, but there are a number of trees that are going to be taken out from, okay, we even look at here. You can't tell, but some of those trees at the top may be the trees that are actually on the fee property and are going to be coming out, especially at the top where you see the canopy. You start losing those.
The ones from the slope are standing. The ones from the slope down are standing. Only, you know, a few select ones coming up up top. Certainly, these are all in the foreground, and all these in the slope are standing.
Sure, those are.
So there may be a few up top, but, I mean, personally, I don't feel that it's going to open this wide open from this view. It might still like to take off. You can stand. The most of it did actually extend out to some of the scrub growth and the vines and stuff like that.
My experience at looking at Photoshop and then looking at what actually gets built is that it's going to be seen. And it's going to be very apparent. It's going to be apparent for a long time. I mean, this is what happened with Field Point at the top of Broadway, at the top of Main Street 35 years ago, okay? And that's what all precipitated, the whole idea of having Broadway buffer and of resource protection within the zoning ordinance, was to prevent that from happening, yeah. So, and I understand, you know, the applicant certainly has a right to build on this property, but we're trying to mitigate the impact, particularly the visual impact as much as possible.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, we did do the best job we could to realistically put the photo. We actually took the model we created previously and put the buildings that we got from the architect into the model, so that we could put the, then look at the model from the same exact vantage point as the photograph was taken. Eye him up, and then render the buildings behind, and then you had to Photoshop around the trees, so...
We do this a lot, and we deal with the Landmarks Commission, the city, and they have now gotten to the point where they want these, but then they also want actual mockups to what's done. Because, yeah, there are, sometimes there are errors in heights and things like that. And it isn't necessary, I'm not saying you're trying to deceive, it's just, that's just part of, it's not a real science, per se. It's more of an art than not. But I think what Pat's trying to say, too, is that typically, when you see these photo montages and then you see what's there, it's almost invariably always bigger. It's more of an impact. So you look at that through a certain eye. And all I think we're trying to do here is to, again, mitigate this bulk that you have. And that's why, I appreciate that you did these studies and how they are done. The real fact here is that, in essence, it's my belief that before it got here, this should have been done, because that was an impact on how it's decided that that much bulk could be done. That's in the past, and we can't really do, as I see, anything about that. What we can do is try to figure out with you how we can, again, kind of lessen the load for the rest of the village for this. But at the end of the day, whatever's built up there is going to be based on what you got at the Board of Trustees, not what was done here.
I think there's, everyone has been speaking about the view from the crest. The view from the crest, in my opinion, is the top. However, it is on a curve of Broadway. You're not looking at the building. You're looking at where you're going.
That's what we kind of saw, too, right? If you have it in mind, and you're looking this way, you probably can see it, but...
Yes, but that's lower down on the, that's past the crest. That's closer to the light on Harriman Road.
Well, could we ask if the board has a preference for one of these plans? If there's kind of a consensus on which plan, I mean, we told you what the applicant's preferences, but maybe there's one that you prefer over the others?
Well, I think that there's a second issue that is important to me, and others, too, but in terms of the layout of the site plan, is the visitor parking on the site. And I think that's being shortchanged here. And I think it's important that there is some visitor parking provided, more than just those pull-offs that you were showing. I don't think that's sufficient. I don't think it's the right way to set it up. I think if you start looking at, if you're going to look at rearranging the buildings, if you look at the site plan where you have the two-twos on the south elevation, where you end up putting your Coltech units in the middle there, in that open space, I think maybe there's an opportunity to create some parking spaces in there that would be visitor parking. And then maybe even do something additional on the rest of, over the Coltech, of creating even a passive recreation area, passive area with benches or whatever for the people who live at the site. But I think you need, you need some off-street parking, you need some visitor parking, because I think with 27 units, I think the problem is that you created four spaces, two garage spaces, and then two parking spaces right in front of the house. But that then eliminates the ability to have spaces for common area parking, which is going to be needed up there. I mean, at some point, someone's going to have visitors that's more than just two cars in front of their house. They're going to need to park somewhere. And it's going to be more than just one person having that at a particular time. So you need to have some sort of off-street parking and some common parking areas.
Well, I'm sure with this plan, we could do some head-in parking. If we were to like this plan, we could do something where you could probably get six or seven head-in spaces off of that driveway. You know, if we, if we went to the compromise plan, we could still probably get several in here. We'd have to look at how many we can get, but we could still get some head-in parking there. We'd get more than the two parallel spaces for sure, probably four head-in spaces, so...
Well, my preference is with the two-twos, again, picking up what Hillary said, just that the three, the three units together is very bulky. At least if you keep it down to the two units, it's broken up more. And as I said, I'm not as concerned of the view coming from Main Street going down Broadway, because you're coming from the center of the village. And the idea is, as I've said for years, that this is a transition site. This is the site that takes you from the low-density undeveloped portions of the village and brings you into the village. So it's at the north end of the site where there should be the higher density, the south end of the site where there should be the lower density.
Could you go to number two view, with the duplexes on the hill? From the street, the view from the street?
From number three, I guess.
The one from Broadway?
The one from Broadway?
It is.
From Broadway?
This one or the one?
The two duplexes.
Number three, I think, or two.
So keep going, number three, coming south.
Number one, the left view, that, but the two duplexes on the hill.
That's this one, it's alternate one. So you got a duplex here and you got a duplex here. You see the light in between is the green space? Tree blocks a lot.
What would happen if the duplex closest to Broadway, that's what you see the most place I do, could we get duplexes to where the green spaces will be drainage green space to where the duplexes? Go to your site plan.
So I was saying, take this building and put away the green spaces and put your green space here.
Then you're going to have a big wall again.
Yeah. Yeah, that's why I like.
I was going to do something, I'd leave it like this. You know, I'd like, I'd leave the space in between.
Michael didn't seem to see the space, but you see the corner.
Joe, if you're going to speak, you're going to.
I'm sorry.
From a site planning aspect though, you get more units that take advantage of the green space when it's in the middle as opposed to the, because we, you know, you've got to remember, this whole swath is a major retained green space. We maintain a buffer here and this is all basically staying. So there's a lot of contiguous green space that we've maintained, trying to get some interior.
I'll tell you the truth, I like your original. What you prefer.
Original.
With that one.
I wish you could do two two and two along that wall somehow.
I think, you know, I mean, the applicant has their preference and that's really what they refer to build, this is what they think would be their best project. They're willing to do, to accept some input from you guys and.
Anthony, you couldn't on that one do three duplexes on Station Road, could you?
Here?
Yeah.
They don't fit with the building separation.
Yeah, I don't think you get, you still get the idea of, yes, yeah, it's just that, because you're going to have very narrow spaces in between the two two, the three twos.
The nodal will love to do that because the duplexes are probably get more money.
Well.
I think, at least for me, that it's not necessarily my preference, it's what I think the village would benefit the best from. And that would be the one where there's the two and two. I still say that this is sort of a lesson of which one is not as, this is the least obtrusive for the village. I'm not supporting it because it's not really, I shouldn't say that. I am supporting this as the alternatives that you're showing. I personally think that, no.
Well, I think at this point, one would just go down, Hillary and Sheila, why don't you also chime in on which site plan you prefer?
As I said before, I prefer this one because of the, when the units are occupied, each owner has an end unit. You have more light into the unit, you have better visibility back, in front and back. And the greens, where you could put the parking spaces between the two of them, they'll be unoccupied most of the time.
Anthony, could you talk a little bit about those parking spaces and how you think you can do it?
Yeah, we have proposed, all the visitor spaces along the ring road, we proposed to construct with a stabilized turf so they don't contribute more stormwater, they don't add impervious surface. What we proposed to do if we did that is rather than having three parallel spaces, probably take six spaces and make them head in so they would come a little further in so they'd go about 20 feet deep off the pavement and, you know, you'd pull into six different spaces there.
But you could landscape that and again, then you landscape with shrubbery and looking up at it, you're not even going to see the cars from Station Road.
Yeah, we would put the landscaping on this side, on the top of the slope. Yeah, you can't put them right on top of the units.
Okay, so you could put it on the edge of the slope.
We're not sure these lighter blue and yellow, that those would be evergreen.
I also remember that there was discussion before about some of these basements were on grade and we were curious because it's like this is a flat plain and how that was going to work. Has that been at all addressed?
Yeah, the, these units that we, on the south side, we walkout basements. So you'd be about 10 feet higher on this side than you would on this side, so.
So that's a three-story structure?
It'd be a three-story, but the architect was able to work it out to be no more than 35 feet at the highest point. So they built the second floor into the roof a bit.
So are you cutting down the grade or are you?
No, we're going to, we're going to meet the grade at the back of the units. We'll adjust the grade a bit in the front and then the grade will slope down along the side of the unit.
So the grade on the ridge, you'll say, doesn't change? You're just building up or using whatever is further in?
Exactly. There's slope across the site now, so we'll make that up around the sides of the units. Probably build this up a little bit here, but we've left the spot grades at the back base of the building to basically meet the existing grade.
And you'll notice like on your video that you showed earlier, the view, the forms of these buildings, which I commented about before, has drastically changed. I mean, those were basically a one and a half story with a very high peak roof with dormers. They were of much smaller scale than what you're showing here. At least that's my recollection.
Glenn, is that true?
I didn't quite follow what you were just saying.
The roof line is different from what we first saw, that's what you, there's more dormers up there.
There's a higher slope roof. These are much more like gambrel roofs and stuff like that. These had, the other ones, it's not worth talking about as much as just look at the video, so to speak, but that was my recollection, that the scale of these things would be significantly different than what was being proposed right now.
Only in that walkout area, off the Station Road view, only in that walkout area, we just created that, so I'm not sure what was prior, what was viewed prior, because we only created that in the last.
Well, we had your original models for the mall.
But that was, that was the front, we didn't do the walkout condition, that was just for the front and the side. We just created the, but the model that you look in after Station Road, you're not seeing that mainly because as you look up the ridge, the landscaping is masking all of that walkout condition. And the landscaping, and that's one thing that's also, hasn't been all really discussed either, is the landscaping that's going to be added to the property is going to mitigate.
I think it's more obvious if you go to the aqueduct view.
Which are not walkouts.
No, but this, the roof line we're talking about.
Perhaps next time you come, you'll also show that video and you can, I can recollect what was shown before as opposed to what you're showing now.
Glenn, has the bulk of your buildings changed?
No, they, no, the bulk of the buildings haven't changed. I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the walkout.
I see you call more dormers up there rather than just a plain roof.
My recollection was your other images were different than this.
Yeah.
From the front of the buildings, yes.
Slope of the roofs was more significant, there were more dormers.
They're going back to the video we did?
Yes.
First models you gave us?
The very first? Okay, now I know.
The architecture may have evolved a bit, but I think the bulk of.
Well, if anything, the architecture has evolved, has become more detailed. We've even put more Victorian or traditional detailing and shingle style detail.
Different than what we're looking at now.
I think you're hearing from this board though, that those that are, we start once.
Yes.
Is that what we're seeing now as opposed to we saw then, this is bulkier, correct?
No, no, it's not significantly different at all. It's just that we did some detailing that was different, but no, it's not significantly different.
Well, then perhaps instead of, perhaps you'll just bring it next time, that's all.
There are more differences in depth within the facade of the buildings, I thought, from the first one that we saw, where these seem to be more of just a solid wall across the back.
It was more styling in the first one.
Yeah, also we're seeing that in three dimensions, this is more of a flat.
If you see the video.
I think once you go to the next one, it's farther down.
Might have changed a little bit, yes.
My other question is, the face that's facing south, the basement level that makes it a three-story building, that's going to be a finish, it's not going to be a concrete wall?
Correct. It's not going to be a concrete wall.
It'll be.
Same as the finish. Exterior siding, it'll be exterior siding.
Well, we'll just wait to see what your site sections are and stuff like that. But I think what you also should understand is, all those have impact about also layout and stuff like that. So this isn't just like you go this step and then you go that step. Sometimes the second step influences the first step, so.
Yeah, I mean, we're hopeful to arrive at a layout that we can continue to advance and get into the engineering and, you know, advancing the design for the buildings and the engineering for the site.
Right, I think last or the first time you were here, we actually went through sort of what we thought made a lot of sense to produce. And that were these, site sections, things like that. And you are progressing in that way, but in a different method than we were suggesting.
I think what you're hearing from us though, and we started to go down the line. That's all right.
Put the light on.
Yeah, that's a good idea. The camera can't see my bad spots, actually, we're linked to that one. We started going down the line, but I think it was very helpful for us to hear about which layout is preferred, because I think a lot of these issues can be vetted out once we know what's the layout going to look like. So rather than interrupting you anymore, if you continue, keep on going in line, that would help us.
Can I ask a question? Is the affordable unit, is that the same size as the other two tops or is it smaller? Or is that just an illusion?
Smaller.
Okay, so can I pretend that I'm an Ethan Allen and move furniture around? So when you go to the next, the next, right, can you, because we're, I'm all about two tops. I think that it's better for the design, it's less bulky. Can you move the bottom two top to where the Coltech is and move the two top that's the affordable over and then, and then put, yeah.
Move this one down here?
Well, no, move the bottom one up.
Up there?
And then move the affordable over.
Here.
There. And then over, and then keep that as green space or Coltech or move that one back over there. I'm just wondering how that layout would work.
What about that?
Saying. But you're still hanging up with.
I think that gets us back to the wall.
If this is really the important key element is the open space here, it's probably not achieving that.
For me, it is.
Back to your big wall again.
I'm just, I'm just kind of.
You need to use the microphone. I don't.
Could we just go back to the video again? Glenn and I are just.
We were just talking about the original video. The original video that you saw was of the streetscapes, the front elevations. So it did not really address the rears. These views that you're seeing now are of the rears, so they're not to be compared with those front elevations that you saw on the video animation originally, where all the fronts. Are they still just as detailed? Absolutely.
Well, then you were showing, from my distinct recollection, because I was concerned from what it looked like from the aqueduct, and then you were showing the fronts looking at the aqueduct. If those were the front features, that's what you had facing the aqueduct in the video.
Yeah, we'd have to look at that in the video.
That's my memory anyway.
I remember the video, stayed on the rose. Is that wrong?
I think it's, I think we've done it.
I think we walked down the aqueduct.
We killed that.
Okay. This is my preference. What is SLA dash one?
Yes, I think the village is best served by this one.
Number one? We appreciate that, thank you. We can turn it over to Rich to discuss the site distances, if that's appropriate time or something.
Sure, I think so, right.
I want to review just site distances, I believe it was discussed at a previous meeting that I was not at. And what we have done is we've looked at site distance criteria based on ASHTO, American Association of State Highway Transportation officials, guidelines for site distances. There's seven parking spaces, on-street spaces in this area. This is the existing site driveway. And we have two sight lines. This is based on existing conditions. And then the lower one is based on conditions with the proposed modifications to provide a little bit more of a delineation of the travel lane before it opens up to the two-lane section in this area. With the lower plan, a vehicle can come up a little bit farther out towards the road and can see a little bit more past vehicles parked along this area. The ASHTO criteria is fairly conservative. It looks at the driver's eye being 14 and a half feet back from the travel lane of the vehicles on the roadway. So it's got the front of the vehicle about six and a half feet back and then about eight feet back to the driver's eye. 20 years ago or so, or actually probably 15 years ago, New York State Department of Transportation used 12 feet back instead of 14 and a half back. At that time, Connecticut Department of Transportation let you come up about 10 feet back and go up to the road. So it's conservative how we're showing it, it is based on what the current guidelines are, but it's ultimately, I believe, your decision as a village, you know, the planning board, we're going to do consultants or staff to determine how many parking spaces you want to have removed in this area. With this plan, we chose to remove all five spaces in this area. We did do a study, we haven't submitted it yet, of on-street parking supply and vacant spaces. We looked at it weekday midday, early morning, also on a Friday night because of the restaurants in the area. And at all times, there's been surplus spaces, the fewest amount of surplus spaces was 16 spaces that we've found. We'll both be submitting that data to you. But the applicant is willing to replace parking that is removed from this area. And we've got a couple of locations that we've started to look at. We can get input from your board. First is over its municipal lot seven, which is here, it's access from Main Street and Field Point Drive is here, comes in here. There's angle spaces through here and then there's parallel spaces through here. And our site is right here, our site driveway is right down in here, and these would be the spaces that would be displaced. So with this alternative, there is 10 feet of right-of-way between the far orientation purposes. North is to the right, so we've rotated it a bit, 90 degrees. So this is as you come in from Field Point Drive, the angle space is out on your right. Broadway is here and there's parallel spaces here and then there's a turnaround area at the end. What we propose under this alternative is to work within the 10 feet of right-of-way to provide angled spaces in lieu of the existing parallel spaces through this area. These spaces would be pulled width, but because of the limitation with the right-of-way, they would be compact spaces in terms of depth, they'd be 15 feet of effective depth from here back to that area. So that's one area of consideration.
Rich, but you have them angled the opposite way.
We can angle them either way. Vehicles do come and turn around here, and so either they're going to turn around before they park or after they park.
Rich, before you change spots, can you explain why you perceive the advantage of keeping the spaces here?
This would be more in proximity to the spaces that have been removed and will get closer to downtown for the rest of the village. We did find vacant spaces here at all times, but again, we're just trying to replace the spaces that would be potentially displaced.
How many anchor spaces do you have there?
You add, you add five, you add five spaces?
Empty spaces. Yes, there's 19 of four spaces in this area at this point, depending ultimately how many are removed from the street, we would replace on one-to-one basis, so.
But they would sort of be compact car spaces?
They would be, not in terms of width, but.
But in terms of length?
Right. And this would require a retaining wall through this area along the front of the line and then likely a temporary grading easement to the embankment.
Is there a way to increase the angle and then, and then make it so that there, it does work effectively for a regular-sized car, SUV like?
Yeah, actually, if you change it to a 30-degree angle, you don't, you get the length, but then you don't gain the spaces. We looked at that initially.
Would it be?
If you change the angle more like that.
What if you took the entire, I see you kept some of the parallels if you, if you want the entire length?
We looked originally at 30-degree angle parking, so it's a softer angle to get the full length. And when we went through that exercise and we came out with the same ten spaces that are existing parallel spaces.
Who owns the property to the west, to the west of the lot?
This area?
No.
I believe it's Field Point.
Okay, this is.
No, east of the lot.
Yeah, this is part of the Field Point.
That's Field Point?
Yes.
Do you have any sense that you'd, they grant an easement or you just?
We haven't spoken.
Oh, that's.
There would just be a grading easement. Right.
Yeah, I thought.
Right, there is a wall that we would be building in this area, there's existing in the turnaround areas, there's a, there's large rocks, essentially a wall, current conditions.
The wall, Rich, would all be on the municipal property?
Right, that was our intent, so we saved a couple of feet to have the wall itself on the municipal block. And if it was, if it was all at grade, then we could have got the full depth of the park exhaust.
And this will include the. And this will include the reconstruction of the steps that come off of that, I assume?
The steps are broken.
Now, we have not proposed it.
Perhaps you should walk down them.
I have, actually.
Did you walk?
No, I was at the restaurant at the River City Plaza, and I did not walk.
Good for you.
Okay, would you like to look together?
Sure.
Okay, so this is at Memorial Park, and this, this is the overall park here, the ball field's here, tennis court's here, and then the play area here. So we're considering on Station Road, a little bit closer to our site, and there are similar situation. This is an area where there are parallel spaces along Station Road, and we haven't drawn this up yet because this was just a couple hours ago, we said, at this location. So we could have, we could have something similar where we could actually have in this area perpendicular spaces. It would be full, full depth, yes. And there's a nice sycamore tree here that we would like to keep, but we will work with your board and staff, depending which is your preferred location, actually how many would be removed and then compensated. This area here works very well in terms of grading. It's essentially at grade. Yes, it would be in the park area. Right, so.
Can't just take that away from park. It was suggested by the village.
Okay, thank you.
It's an idea.
Yeah, that's why we're here.
Only a couple of feet.
Yeah, yeah, just a few swings.
No, there's actually no swings in that area. There's a couple of benches over in this area, and this is where the, all the swings ends up. Then there's another area here where there's a slight retaining wall, or anything between two and four feet through here. So either through this area, but preferably in the center here.
This is a, is this a park, parkland, or is it just village-owned property?
I believe it's parkland, so if there's an alienation issue, then.
This doesn't require all the approved.
I have this very complicated.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. It's not just municipal.
Yeah, so I'm not sure where the actual right-of-way line is through this area.
That would be interesting, see what, where the road line, white line is.
What about the other side? Isn't that the?
That's where the creek is, goes through here in the grades. There's only a few feet that's relative to the level, and that grades start to drop.
A lot of water issues, too.
Very.
Think it would be more tougher to, sewer lines there.
Such a balance with site, do you think, is more prudent for picking up spaces?
Picking up spaces could be done at either location, absent of the issue of the park alienation. The other lot, Lot 7, is closer to downtown.
Yeah, my own concern with Station Road is, that's, it's, yeah, it's limited site distance. When people come off of Broadway and turn onto Station Road around that bend.
Right, in this area, so I swear, if you have it here, there's a retaining wall, and then you're rebuilding the retaining wall near the swing hall there. But again, if they have a spot.
Yeah, it's really tough, frankly, it's really tough for the parents with their kids, they're getting out of that already, and it's like danger land with the kids. So I'd stay.
Yeah, on the other hand, if it was perpendicular through this area, then you're opening the doors, you're not opening it into the traffic.
Well, if you, if you.
Which is what it's now.
If you could create the parking, if you could create the parking with a sidewalk, that would be a benefit to the village because people walk in the road, on this road, and it's dangerous.
I'm surprised nobody's going to run over.
Yeah.
And that's a whole other thing, but.
I saw this, people walk in this morning.
The best thing would be to, for a sidewalk to be on your side of the property that goes all the way through the tunnel. But that's.
For another day.
That as well, a little bit. And then there's, there's the painted area through the tunnel, and then there's nothing really on the other side for kind of parking.
Yeah, the problem with that is that if it's, if the sidewalk was on the other side, then it would connect from town all the way through the tunnel. But then, when you're going through the tunnel, at least you can see the cars. Now, you have to hear them, and you're like, hope to God they see me, and then you just wait, and then you're kind of scurry. If you have a dog, forget it. You gotta pick him up.
Yep. So as part of the park issue, I would think, potentially, I'm not sure, and that'll be for David and others to figure out, is that if, if there is parking here, it could potentially be associated with a park, and therefore.
Would be an alienation issue.
Right.
Personally, I think the other alternative is a better solution for the village, which is in desperate need. And I know River City would be very happy if you were to.
I don't know if I want to admit it, but I'll say it, is when I was coming to, I had dinner.
Exorcement.
And I came to drive, I should have just walked, but I came to drive down here for the meeting, and I couldn't find convenient parking, in part because of the parents, Tom and I.
Oh, yeah. That means it's cool.
Is that what it was?
Right here, it's a park where I was before. And actually, to defend myself, I, after I ate at River City, I drove around and looked at this and some other areas a little bit more before I came to the meeting. So it wasn't like I just wasn't walking.
Plus, if we put the parking at the existing municipal lot, we get a new set of stairs.
Maybe.
But it is more centrally located for the spaces that are being. Rich, I think Mary Ann has a question.
Could you explain why the parking spaces have, I know you've got a picture of the sideline, but explain in layperson's terms why those parking spaces have to be eliminated on Broadway?
One's just the one in front of our site.
Right, this is based on a criteria of desirable site distance for vehicles coming out of the site driveway. It's an existing site driveway, and from our data, there hasn't been in the history of accidents in the past three years. And it's just, looking at this criteria, again, it's fourteen and a half feet back from the travelways where the driver's eye is, even though it used to be twelve feet in New York, it's up to ten feet, or down to ten feet in Connecticut for many, many years. So this is, this is a criteria, it's admittedly conservative in the textbook.
Now apply the criteria, I understand the criteria.
Right.
Apply.
So this is the sight line for a vehicle exiting the driveway, looking at an approaching vehicle coming south on South Broadway. So we had done travel speed with radar to determine the eighty-fifth percentile speed, which is the speed at which eighty-five percent of traffic is traveling at or below. So it's thirty-six miles per hour is what the speed was, opposed to thirty. So essentially, what we're doing is, is having the people being able to see the people who are driving relatively fast, and have these people coming out if a vehicle's exiting the driveway, so people coming in this direction would have the opportunity to see them, to react, and to brake, and to be able to come to a full stop.
And as an assault, do they lose how many spaces?
With that, with this alternative, we would lose five spaces for the stopping site distance criteria, so these last two spaces would remain.
Were those spaces there, Rich, when fee was at full occupancy?
I'm not sure how long those spaces have been there.
I know, but even when, the thing was, even when fee was at full occupancy, there wasn't much traffic coming, going in and out of fee.
Nothing like it's going to be.
Nothing like as a residential development. And that's why I asked if you would take a look at the accident data from, all the way from Main Street down to Station Road on Broadway, and find out what accidents had, if there'd been any accidents. I asked that at the last meeting, I don't know if you had a chance to do that.
Yeah, we did get accident cases where we.
Okay.
Who'd be speaking?
But again, you're adding now, now you're adding a driver with more residences that are going to be coming out during morning and evening peak hour, and you have people exiting from Sycamore Lane, you have people exiting and then entering Irvington Estates driveway. So you're adding more traffic in this area, in this concentrated area. So we want to make sure that this isn't going to be an issue for potential, you know, accident happening here.
Right. What happens if these park, these spaces don't go, they stay? What kind of mitigating things can you do?
With the striping?
We had proposed a striping in this area to, to essentially keep the through vehicles in this area until they're past our driveway, to come out to that area where it opens up to two lanes. And with that, we have additional striping here to delineate as compared to existing conditions where there's limited striping in that area. So it pronounces the driveway a bit more, lets people know that there's a driveway there.
Would your eye off, compared to the top one?
I understand a limited.
But that, you'd lose, you'd drop your eye out, as compared to, your eye is back here, behind, behind this area here, which is, and then you're bringing your eye out, the driver's eye out.
That's the case, could you leave off five parking spaces? Would you have to get rid of a couple of them?
Let's up to the village.
Okay.
There are, there are instances where, you know, if you were to look everywhere in the village for ASHTO criteria, you have a lot fewer spaces in the village.
You don't have to go that far, you just look at up the hill. Just look up the hill right there.
Right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, this is existing conditions for seventy, seventy-two units associated with Irvington Estates, and there's, if we were to remove one parking space here, we would be consistent with Irvington Estates driveway operation.
But again, it's additional cars, additional traffic in the area. I think the idea of you're striping that along Broadway, and you would stripe the spaces that are taken away, I think you end up doing some traffic calming by doing that.
Right.
You know, narrowing it down to one lane, so maybe people will even go slower through the center of town.
Would there be any issue getting DOT approval for that?
No, we would be able to do that. We'd work with the state DOT all the time. As far as, as far as we would be in the state.
No, I'm talking about the strip.
Right, we would, we would work with them relative to the proposed striping.
Wouldn't it be a win-win for all if you actually do, do your first proposal of putting additional parking in that, that one area?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not, it's for all.
Including River City.
If that does work, you know, I think that's a benefit for all.
Those are the two options you looked at?
I guess.
Okay. Any other questions? No, like, I guess the general consensus is we prefer the parking in the existing municipal lot, what can be done there.
Okay, great, and we'll offset whatever ultimately is decided here. We'll offset it.
All right, so every time I follow over, it just happens.
Yes.
Yeah, so we have a little bit more homework cut out for us now, but at least now we know the approach in terms of the layout and obviously, communication. Site distance, so we'll return to you shortly, hopefully for the whole package and images for engineering and there's more traffic.
Traffic.
We have more information, we'll be able to submit that by.
Right, because they have, yes, for a bunch more information.
Right, plus the accident data, plus all the other.
Yes.
Okay.
So, good.
That's it, any other comments from the board? Any comments from the public?
Yeah.
Chat, you want to come up? Oh, I'm sorry, he's isolated here. Please state your name, ma'am.
Charlotte Anshler. I, they didn't know there now, but my property is directly below the hill where the properties are going to be. The risk of becoming very unpopular, I have to point out, since we discuss the traffic situation. I drove up Broadway from Station Road, there was practically a solid line of cars from Station, Station Road Broadway into section up to the bridge, virtually. And it wasn't even, it wasn't even, I believe it was before four o'clock. Now, at four o'clock in the morning, I don't think there's people who are coming out of these buildings will have any problem going either way, depending on where they want to go. If they come out at the times when there's the most traffic, they're going to sit in that driveway, I don't know how long, unless there's a light there, which I don't expect is going to be put there. I think it's going to be incredible traffic jam, getting out mornings, coming back in the evening, if they come from the south, it'll raise another problem. So I worry about that. I worry about the general overpopulation of this relatively small space in Irvington, which you already have an apartment building complex above it, you're going to have some twenty-seven units somewhere conservatively estimated in the dream, anywhere between median and the people living there. I shudder on their behalf how they're going to feel in that situation. And that isn't going to do with my personal concerns about that, which is less at the moment when I hear these problems being discussed. Broadway's not very wide, as you know, it becomes one-way going north. Angle spacing or any kind of other spacing is going to make it even narrower. Frankly, I cannot visualize it. I would just like to point that out because you will eventually be making a decision. I can go another way, I can go down Station Road, I can come up May. Other people are not so likely, especially not people who are going to live in these new buildings. I would like you to give this serious consideration.
Thank you. Any other comments? Chat?
I guess we moved beyond sequestering the parking spaces being considered as a park, but I just wanted to add the comment that I thought that was somewhat presumptuous to be considered, even though it was simply an idea, to be taking the space in the park by Americans.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? No?
That doesn't mind me. We need to schedule a public hearing. We have to look back, ask, schedule it for the next game.
Well, we won't have the information, I'd like to see the final information from you before we schedule the public hearing. So if you get all that information to us before the next meeting, then we can look at it before the meeting, make any comments at that meeting, and then probably at that meeting, then we can do it. Okay?
You know, I hate to prolong this, Eric, could you bring up the view from Broadway for any of the three, it doesn't make a difference.
The one that you were talking about before with the intersection, right?
Yes. It's hard to tell.
Turn the lights off, maybe.
No.
What's it, you're looking for, Chuck?
Well, I, I thought, these are the backs of the buildings, and I thought they were different than the backs of the building that you could see from the aqueduct, so you just can't see.
Okay. Okay. Okay, with that, we'll adjourn the meeting.